Segosawakuego. Good morning, everyone. We are at the Toninaga Mohawk Council meeting of Tuesday, February 11. And we had a meeting with the MNR on the Lake Ontario Fishery Management and studies they were going to be up taking this morning. And so it was a planning meeting and it's just a continuation of the studies that have been done in a number of years past. And so what we will need now is a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a mover?
No second, chief.
Moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Curtis Brandt. Is anyone opposed to adopt the agenda? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. You have the minutes of January the 25th. I'll just read the motions so that we people listening online can hear what they are. So a meeting of the Toninaga Mohawk Regular Council is held on January the 28th, 2025 in the council chambers at 1:00 PM. Present were myself, Chief R. Donald Miracle, Councillors Chris Brandt was here, Curtis Brandt, Aaron Ferrante, Linda Levine and Chris Miracle were here. Chase Ogari said he sent his regrets. He had work commitments and Angela Miracle was on vacation. Staff present, Acting Director, CEO was Kelly Miracle, also the Director of Human Resources, Shelley Bowden, the Executive Administrative Assistant and Recording Secretary to the Council, and Charles Miracle, the Executive Assistant to the Chief. It was vote, motion was moved by Aaron and seconded by Linda to adopt the agenda. The motion was carried. Motion two was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Curtis Brandt that the council minutes of January the 9th, 2025 be approved. The motion was carried. Motion three was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Curtis Brandt to approve the rules and procedures of committees of council be submitted to the next council agenda for review and clarification on the definition of a community member. The motion was carried. Motion four was moved by Curtis Brandt and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve the following meetings outside the territory. The chief will be attending the Chiefs of the Ontario Health Forum, February 25th, 27th, 2020, 25 in Toronto. Chief will be attending the Chiefs of Ontario meeting on February 26th in Toronto. The motion was carried. Motion five was moved by Aaron and seconded by Chris Brandt to defer discussions regarding duties of councillors until full council is present. The motion was carried. Motion six was moved by Curtis Brandt and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve staff provide a report on all built, MBQ buildings without backup power. The motion was carried. These are generators. Motion seven was moved by Chris Brandt and Curtis Brandt to approve a scheduling of Mohawk Golf Board Meeting, February 29th at 5:00 PM. The motion was carried. Motion eight was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron Ferrante to defer scheduling the Audi Board Meeting until the members have a chance to review all the corporate documents. The motion was carried and the corporate documents have been sent to the council this week, this past week, all of them. Councillor Chris Miracle is requesting all housing funding notices be sent to council for review and input on options for locations and styles of houses that should be applied for. Motion nine was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Curtis Brandt to approve scheduling a meeting with the Aboriginal Labor Force Development Circle regarding building tiny homes on site. The motion was carried. It is noted that the council is aware that future government funding could possibly be capped. Motion 10 was moved by Aaron Ferrante and seconded by Curtis Brandt to approve the Bay of Quinte Remedial Action Plan Report. The motion was carried. Motion 11 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron Brandt, Aaron Ferrante, pardon me, to approve this, to schedule a meeting with the Ministry of Natural Resources, Lake Ontario Management Unit on February 11th to present their 2025 field programs. Motion was carried and that meeting just, that meeting just happened. Motion 12 was moved by Chris Miracle and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve to pay for the hydro extensions required and the road allowance at 656 Norways Road. The motion was carried. Motion 13 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron Ferrante that whereas the proposed hydro connection at 668 Highway 49 was reviewed, be resolved at the council representing the Mohawks of the Way of Quinny First Nation at a duly council meeting held on January the 28th and having reviewed the sketch provided by Hydro One Networks, Inc., attached here to a Schedule A in respect of the new or modified connection at 668 Highway 2, Highway 49 to the electricity distribution system hereby approve the proposed location of poles, anchors, conductors and equipment as identified in the sketch on the Toninaga Mohawk Territory. Council Resolution 242580 was, was carried, was carried, carried and signed. Motion 14 was moved by Curtis Brandt and seconded by Chris Brandt that whereas hydro connection at North Street subdivision was reviewed and where, and be it resolved that the council representing the Mohawks of the Way of Quinny First Nation at a duly convened council meeting held on January the 28th and having reviewed the sketch provided by Hydro One Networks, Inc., attached here to a Schedule A in respect of a new or modified connection on North Street subdivision to the electricity system hereby approve the proposed location of the poles, anchors, conductors and equipment as identified in the sketch on the Toninaga Mohawk Territory. Resolution 2581 was carried and signed. Motion 15 was moved by Chris Brandt, sent by Curtis Brandt to approve signing the letter of permission to harvest in our traditional territory area for Jody Kadu. The motion was carried. Motion 16 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron to approve signing a letter of permission to harvest in our traditional, traditional harvesting area for Stephen Wine Garden. The motion was carried. Motion 17 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron Ferrante to acknowledge that Chief Miracle, Councillors Curtis Brandt, Aaron Ferrante and Linda Levine will be attending the Iroquois Caucus General Assembly on April 9th and 10th here in Toninaga. The motion was carried. Motion 18 was moved by Chris Brandt and seconded by Aaron Ferrante to acknowledge the report on the Association of Iroquois All Indigenous Governance Funding and this year's funding will be set off the strategic plan. The motion was carried. Motion 19 was moved by Curtis Brandt, seconded by Aaron Ferrante to defer request of, to defer the request for a right of way on Bell's Road as this property is potential property MBQ can build a house on. The motion was carried. Motion 20 was moved by Aaron Ferrante and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve the signing of the Ministry of Health Memorandum Understanding for Indigenous Mental Health and Addiction Worker in the amount of $338,125. Indigenous professional development in the amount of $18,473. Indigenous youth life promotion in the amount of $207,041. The motion was carried. Motion 21 was moved by Chris Miracle and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve the Be In For After School Program Manual. The motion was carried. Motion 22 was moved by Aaron Ferrante and seconded by Curtis Brandt to approve to pay the Derek Wong invoice number 863 in the amount of $9,882.16 and invoice number 864 in the amount of $11,921 for economic development issues. Motion was carried. Chris Miracle voted negative. Motion 23 was moved by Aaron Ferrante and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve to pay the Miller Thompson invoice 484080197 in the amount of $1,120 for corporate matters and $4,000, number 4080198 in the amount of $16,352.50 for economic development. The motion was carried, carried. Chris Miracle voted negative. Motion 24 was moved by Aaron Ferrante and seconded by Chris Brandt to approve to pay the JFK Law invoice 30570 in the amount of $5,963.10 for the long-term care facility. That motion was carried. The council confirmed the following meetings. January 29th will be the local business meeting. February 11th will be the regular council meeting. February 12th will be the local council meeting. February 18th will be the regular council meeting and February 26th will be the local business meeting. Motion 25 was moved by Aaron Ferrante, so we put this meeting going private and that motion was carried. The council went in private at 2:53 PM. These are the minutes as recorded by Shelley Bowden, Executive Administrative Assistant and Recording Secretary of the Council. Is there any question, any errors, omissions or errors, omissions or corrections to these minutes? Chris Brandt, Curtis, Aaron?
Do we have to make the change to the ones that we put in private and move them to public?
We do if they're in these minutes, yes.
Moving them from the...
So which motions will they be? Shelley? Number eight? So how should that now read then? So defer will be decline. Okay? Anyone opposed to that correction? Okay, the word, it will be changed, the word deferred to decline, request for the right of way. Is, are there any other corrections? Go ahead, Chris. Just refer to the motion first if you look at it. Remember, just correcting the minutes the way they're recorded.
So the motion 18 to use AI dollars to set the strategic planning. I believe I put a motion on with no seconder to use that money towards bylaw development.
Do you want that noted?
Yes, please. I can double check the minutes, but my notes say that there was no seconder and I said to use the money for AI, AI, the AI dollars for residential bylaw development. And then at 4:25, I'm not sure if this would be recorded in the private minutes, but at 4:25, I made a motion with no seconder to have a community meeting to discuss bylaws and other priorities.
After motion 24?
Sorry? It was at 4:25, so it must have went into the private minutes, but I don't know why it would have to be in private fast for community meetings.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have to wait till we get to the private minutes and is that in there, Shelley? Okay? And I know that... Yeah, I, I think the council asked for dates when the community center was available and that's on the agenda today, I see.
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you.
So then how should that read then, Shelley?
It's in the private minutes.
Okay. All right, then, then with those corrections and is there a mover to accept the minutes as corrected?
Oh, we had a couple other ones.
Ogari? Well, anything that should be in public that was in private should go in the public minutes.
And Chief, I believe on motion nine, I declared a conflict of interest that that... Okay, thank you.
So motion nine, you were negative?
Conflict.
Conflict, okay.
Add a month to the next? Yeah. The next agenda?
Is there a mover to move them as corrected?
I'll move.
Moved by Aaron to accept the minutes as corrected.
I'll second, chief.
Ogari? Okay, anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. So approved with corrections. Is there any business arising from these minutes? Ogari?
Nope.
Chris? Aaron? Curtis? Chris? Okay, none? Just no, no business arising from the minutes? Number three, upcoming meetings. I think I have been approved in previous minutes for all of my meetings. Is there some party that I need approval for that were in previous minutes? I think there's one on the 24th now, isn't there? Is there a meeting on the 24th? Does any council members have any outside meetings?
No.
None? Number four. Motion to approve the council meetings of, check, check your calendars. Get your calendars out, your dates. Does anyone have a conflict with March the 4th? March the 5th, rather.
Nope. I do with the 19th, though.
Me as well.
So March the 5th is good and March the 19th, Aaron has a conflict, so we'll...
And so does Ogari.
So what day would you prefer? Could we do the 18th then?
I'm out of the country from the 12th or the 11th to the 19th, chief.
When is it, Ogari?
March 11th to the 19th.
11th to 19th, so could we do the 20th then?
I'm out from the 19th to the 26th.
To the 26th, so I guess...
Could we do the 27th?
We could. That's Indigenous Ontario Region Chiefs update.
Or the 28th?
28th works.
Or the 10th?
The 10th will work. Which is it?
It'll be the 10th.
Is that okay?
It'll be the 10th?
Unless that's too close to the first week, then the 28th is fine.
Well, it just said we'll get, he'll keep things that might be urgent caught up if we do it the 10th.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so let's go the 10th then. Now for the local business meeting, the 12th, so there'll be the same conflicts there. So what, what day would work instead of the 12th?
The evening of the 27th or 28th?
Is there anything in the first week?
Oh, and I'm good the first week, too.
So let's have something in the first week of March then. Does the 5th work?
The 5th is regular. The 5th is regular. We could do local on...
Do you want to do, do you want to do local and the, local, local in the daytime and local at night? Regular, okay.
That's fine with me.
5th then and the 26th? That's not good for, and you're suggesting the 27th?
I'm good with doing it all on the 5th if that's okay, like just doing regular and then right into local.
Yeah, so what about March the 26th, local business?
Can we do that one on the 27th or 28th?
We can. The 20, 27th would work.
Okay.
That good for everybody? The 27th of March for local? So that'll be the 27th. What about April the 2nd? For the regular business meeting. Everybody good with that?
I think so.
Anybody have a conflict with the 2nd of April? Seeing none, that will go that way? Or that, the 16th?
I think that's good.
Everybody good with the 16th? Okay, we'll go with that. April the 9th? Any conflict there with anyone? Is that... Iroquois Caucus?
We have, I see all day.
So that, what about the 8th then?
Sure.
The 8th? And the next one is the 23rd? Does anybody have a conflict anywhere with the 23rd?
And that's for local, is it?
Local.
So it'd be the evening.
So the 23rd then, so the council meetings will be March the 5th and 10th for regular. Local business will be the 5th and 27th of March at 7:00 PM. The regular council meeting will be April the 2nd and 16th at 9:30 AM. Local business will be April 8th and the 23rd at 7:00 PM. Can we have a mover to set those dates?
I'll move.
I'll second, chief.
Aaron and Chris Brandt? Is anyone opposed?
No, chief.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. The duties of the councillors, the motion that we just read that they would have it when we have full council, we do not have full council today. But primarily the duties of the council are pretty general. Is one is to attend the council meetings to pay attention to what's going on in your portfolio. If there are issues, discuss it with the senior management and the portfolio holder. Bring recommendations to council if you need changes or there's something you want done. Work within the administrative process and work and to work as a team and then when we're lobbying, then you should be part of the lobby groups to lobby for funds for community resources and answer the, the community questions if they were there within your portfolio. But a lot of this stuff is really administrative and let the, the people, the staff do like if they have an application for housing, they're the ones doing the day-to-day manage, let them follow up on it. So we don't have a councillor saying one thing and staff saying something different. So that's pretty much it. And then, then you are like a trustee or the band and so we have to make sure that we're using the band's resources properly and wisely and and then we're collectively accountable to the community.
I think Linda wanted to be here for this particular, this at the address of councillor's duties. And it has to do with portfolios. So I think we should defer it until we have full council so we can really, you know, discuss it as a full council.
Motion to defer.
We defer until full council is present?
Yes.
So that's moved by Chris and seconded by Aaron.
Yep.
Is anyone, any opposed? Or the other thing is if you're, if your portfolio has a committee, then you're supposed to attend the committee meetings. And just be, read your material before council and be prepared when you come to council to conduct the business affairs. Okay, so this, that, is there anybody opposed to deferring this till we have full council? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. It'll be deferred. The dates for a community meeting.
I think you should pick the end of March, chief, only for simple, that, that's, it's a lot of reading.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't got through, I've got through some of it, but there's still a pile to go.
Okay, so then 24th?
I won't be here.
Now, one thing I would like to say, when we had the last community meeting, there were several suggestions talked about, about the use of the culberson land. What, some said agriculture, some said housing and some said maybe some kind of commercial purpose, like a commercial plaza, no pot shops, all that came out. But when council hears this thing, there's, it just dies. It just, nothing happens. It's irresolute. And so when, when people come and make these suggestions, the, they were asked to bring back a plan on how, what, what to see so that people have something to look at. So if you're going to go back, one of the things is what's going to happen with the culberson land? And so there should be a, you know, are you going to say this section will be for housing, this section's going to be for agriculture? Are you going to subdivide it? What's, do we need to have a meeting?
This meeting specifically was put on the agenda for a bylaw meeting.
Yeah.
Which was put on, I think, by Chris.
Yeah, and there should, but I know what will call people at your, at a general council meeting, usually people ask what's on their mind. And one of the things you're going to come in is what's the work plan? Or the, the distribution of the culberson money that has been approved by council? Where is that all that? I know Bonnie's going to handle the membership, but there's, there has to be a work plan.
But if it's a bylaw meeting.
We still have to work through the trusts and all that stuff.
Okay.
But we should, we should be letting the community know that it is being worked on. This is what's happening that stage by stage that the, that the people are getting so much per person and the kid, the, the children between the ages of baby and 18 have to have their, their trust funds put into the bank for them, but we have to be more transparent with our community on things like this.
The staff are working on a work plan for that, so we can pull it all together. I know Bonnie is, there, she may be aware yesterday that there was a lot of band members, there, there's, their status cards have expired. They've not taken, updated their status cards. So there's a whole raft of work to be done there that's going to keep that membership busy or or is council going to accept expired status cards?
Well, a status card is a piece of paper that telling you that your status, if expires, it doesn't mean that you expire. They still are status. Just because there is, the card has expired, it should not make a difference.
I know, but these are the questions that the staff are asking and these are the questions that council will have to answer.
Well, if, if we make this community meeting like a general community meeting with more things and just bylaws on it, then we can pull more information together to address those.
Yeah, exactly. So that we're prepared to go there because I don't like just raking things off the cuff of my saber out of my head. Because sometimes I like to read over what I'm going to be talking about is to make sure that I'm giving the community accurate information.
Exactly. We should have an agenda for the community so that they know what questions that they would like to ask and then, then, and stay on topic, though. It's, it's very, very easy to get off topic, stay on topic with the agenda, so that everybody is more informed and, and that it's, it's easier to address questions.
Because the last, last time we had a meeting, we took, we took information there to inform them and they didn't want to talk about that. All they wanted to talk about was when was the cash distribution going to happen?
And that's, that's why we, we have an agenda for them, for ourselves and stick to the agenda.
Yep.
Anyway, so you'll have to then start identifying topics.
Something of things that people want to chat about?
On the, on the cash, they know that they're going to be interested in that, what's, what work has been done since we had the last general meeting? What direction has council given?
We did do that, though, because our last, we didn't have a general meeting. We just had a meeting about the culbertson. And since then, we have, well, council has made a plan for what would be moving forward, so we can definitely give an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
So if there are items that you want to see, make sure that Shelley and Charlie are aware of what they are, what topics you want on there. So an agenda can be prepared and any background work can be done to provide you with accurate information so you're not just talking off of your sleeves.
Well, I'm saying that too, chief. You, you've got to have all councilware, not, not, so if somebody's gone on holidays, no, they all got to be there.
Yeah, can we do?
Right now, what we're focused on, can everybody be there on one of these dates? Curtis has suggested the end of March, you give them a chance to get caught up on the reading?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot to read.
Yeah, I can't be there for any of those. Can we look at April?
Or the bylaws that we got are that thing, is what we were given.
Perhaps April, chief, when March is my holidays?
April, so look for dates in April?
Yep, I'd say so.
All right then, so we'll need a motion then to look for dates in April.
Motion.
Sorry. Everybody's saying?
I'll second. To look for dates that are available in April.
So Chris Miracle is moving to ask for dates in April and Aaron seconding.
With that, could we put out a post just inviting community members to have their input on what they would like to discuss so we have an idea that can be prepared with answers?
We can.
Do we make a motion for Rebecca?
Just approve to, just let's finish one thing.
That's okay.
Can we just finish this one?
Yeah, sorry, I was talking to Cheryl.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve to look for dates in April for a general council meeting. Is there anyone opposed to that? None? Fake motion is carried. Now, Aaron, your motion?
I'm not sure if it needs a motion, but can we have Rebecca put something out to invite community members to let us know what they would like to discuss so we can be prepared and have information?
Okay, we can do that.
An action item.
But put a cutoff date so we have the staff have time to look things up because there's just so much information.
Absolutely.
And and are we going to put a a limit on because if you have, let's say fifty different fifty different community members putting down fifty different items?
We can take review them and see what you know, what all the similar items are and go that way. And then if we need another meeting, we can have another meeting for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Break it up into a few if we need to.
Okay. So the rules and procedure, the next item then is we'll put that as an action item to put a notice in the newsletter that any committee members would like to put items on the agenda for discussion, but this cannot be about people's personal business either.
I don't think we're going to have time to put it in the newsletter because then it'll be too late. Right, because then the newsletter newsletter won't be able to For sure, that's what I was Yeah. Sorry, I didn't get to that fashion enough. I was just going to say newsletter is probably a little too late. But we can put it out.
Social media.
Especially if you want packages that can
And the other thing is that people
Is the cutoff already done for March? Newsletter?
Isn't it the deadline usually this week or it's around the middle of the month, right?
For Marches? I think we should put it in there anyway, then.
Put it in March if we're not going to do the meeting till April.
Yeah, we can't do it in March. That's okay.
That's okay. No problem, Angela. You're getting old like the rest of us.
Getting old that I can't see.
Twenty nine.
Actually, I got a birthday card. It said, we're not old, we've just been young for a long time.
Just a foggy head still.
So the rules and procedures for committees, could we have shoe come in, please?
I think she's on a call. She has a call about police board insurance.
So the rules and procedures for committees, we need to report though on how many active committees do we have from councils? I know that some of those committees have not met. I have not seen committee minutes for those committees in years. And I think the
I think they did send us one.
We get the library, the library committee sends minutes. There's no longer a school committee, but they used to send their minutes. There used to be a record, an environmental committee which went defunct.
They sent an update. It was farther back in the minutes. Or not in the minute, sorry, in the agendas. It was a few months ago. Of which ones were active.
So what we should do, the ones that are not active, we should say that those ones should be put into a veins or if you're going, if there's a need for those committees, then you should post for new members. And normally with, this is why when people resign from a committee of council, they sent a letter to council so council would know. That's not how it's been working. When they deal with staff, we don't know who's on these committees of council. You should know who's on the committee of council. Because all the committee are committees of council. So you need to know, do we need an environmental committee? Do we need a police committee? Do we need a, do we need, well, we're going to have a governance group for that. But do we need a school committee? Do we need at the library board? Chris?
We need our committees to follow the rules and procedures of committees, chief.
Exactly. And so normally, because it's a committee of council, people apply, the council then approves those people to sit on those committees. The committee appoints their own chair. Then the secretary is responsible for submitting minutes to council. Chris?
Chief, may I make a motion that staff and TMC are not to lobby community members or family to get on committees?
Why would we not lobby for community members to be on the committees?
Staff should not be calling cousins, hey, get on this committee, get on this committee, or a councillor should not be calling, I want you, you on this committee, come to council and say, hey, I just developed a new committee. Here is a new committee. Well, wait a sec, we didn't advertise that. Oh, do you have a problem with these people? That's how it's happened in the past, chief, when we got to get away from that kind of.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone that happened that's been brought to my attention.
Well, we never, I don't think we, we have a rec, we have an arena committee. That was brought forward and then we have another motion recently advertised committee. So so what happened, the old arena committee that a councillor brought to the table and we approved, a councillor approved of the committee. Of the people that came in on our list.
When was that, Chris? When was that?
But it still hasn't been, it has to be cancelled though. You can't just go on to the next committee. It'd be the last council.
The last council, okay.
Councillor have a committee, I know, but you have to cancel that before you develop a new committee.
Just wait. Again, we're not listening to each other. Just tone down, talk to each other. Do you have something? Well, do you have any information about these committees, the arena committee?
Yeah, back in twenty two, there was a motion to approve to that motion about community. There was no effort. It didn't go anywhere.
So there is no arena.
They couldn't call in four members. I don't think they got anything.
It closes soon, I believe, at the end of the week, maybe?
Okay, but see the committee.
Okay.
But see, the committee shouldn't be calling for a committee of council. The council should be doing that. The council should know what the terms of reference are for the arena committee. And then the the name should be submitted, then the council approves and that committee gets up and running. Because right now, when it, now see, we here, we think we have an arena committee and there is none. But then, okay, well, then that's that's fine. Pardon?
There's a call to
It's open still?
Yes.
For this new one?
For the new one?
Or for the only one?
For the only one.
And so when when was that in twenty twenty two?
Twenty twenty two was the original motion to create an arena committee.
Yes.
And then it just, it didn't go anywhere in twenty two.
Well, there was COVID at that time.
Community for community members to join the meeting they wish.
They wish to, okay. And who who's that information going to?
I believe Tom.
Okay, so then Tom brings it to the arena committee. Okay, so then he should be then bringing the list of names that people have applied to council.
Yeah.
What you saying, that's right?
I think it's still open. I think it was closing this month. But I believe it's still open, but he did bring.
There was a posting that went out on social media about about this arena committee. And yeah, I mean, it didn't happen when it was motion before, which is fine. It's behind us. Let's move forward and let's see if the community will lend a hand with becoming a committee and let's get the ball rolling.
Okay, so is it also in the newsletter? Angela, do you know?
Yeah, it's in the newsletter and it closes February twenty first at four thirty PM.
There you go.
So February twenty first, four thirty PM is the date to apply if you want to be on the record, if you want to be on the arena committee.
February twenty first, you said?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
So then a committee will be established then to, it'll be a committee of council. And then the council should then approve the names that are going to be on this committee because it's committee of council.
Which we have done for the past committees that were brought to council.
Then they should be sit, whoever the secretary is, should be sitting in their minutes to council so that council knows what's going on. Okay, does that answer your question, Chris?
I believe the motion is to have your committees follow our rules and procedures.
Well, they have, all committees have to do that.
They haven't.
Which committee hasn't?
Probably all of them. I know that some of them, they've been on the committees for probably ten years, some of these folks, and thanks for your service, but
it's really up to the secretary, though, of the committee to let them know when their term is up. And then when they have to repost.
Wow, I read these, I read these documents and stuff to chief and council to approve all the motions. No action happens until you approve their motions.
Well, that that's really an administrative function.
Well, it says council and then change all the documents and because it doesn't say that's administrative, it says it's a council approval.
The members have to be approved, but I guess when somebody's term is up.
No, their minutes, their motions, everything else has to be approved by chief and council. Actions to be taken, are they going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars? That requires council approval.
Yeah, the council usually acknowledges that they have received the information, the minutes of the committees or information sharing, but the communities do not have the authority to spend money. If there's budget items that they're asking for council to spend money on, that has to be put in the budget that council approves.
It's my understanding that that is how they operate. They can make their motions based on, okay, this is what the committee has decided we would like to see, but then that goes to council.
So if we look at the TCDR committee, there are members of council, there are members, that's a committee of council, really?
I don't know. They're not, they're not a committee of council. There's a separate committee because the council of the day, when this committee got established, council wanted it to be separate. The parliament, they didn't want to have them to deal with it. So it was a separate committee that was established back in two thousand and six to address it. So they're not a committee of council.
So they get they get the cigarette quota, two dollars.
Those organic cubes, so the money was all they're coming for.
By MBQ?
Yeah.
But so what they did, though, is they did provide the council with the policy of how they approve grants and what the limits are and all that, they how that they provide criteria on how they would administer the grants where we would apply to them. So in some sense, it is it is accountable to the council. In that rate. So the council's not making decisions, but they they do know the balance of the account that's saved up for recreational project. Yeah, because that's so that's also that's part of our audit. Okay, so anyway, I guess the these are the attached documents for rules and procedures of counties of council. And I would think that these committees of council should be brought to an orientation meeting and go over the rules and procedures for committees so they understand how it's to operate. So what would the council, is shoe still busy?
She's on a call.
Okay, we'll we'll table this here till later. She can come in and discuss with council. The MTO subsidy submission, this is an annual submission that we have to send to the MTO. The twenty twenty three MTO subsidy is completed and ready for submission to MTO. The subsidy amount is one million seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, five hundred and forty six dollars ninety cents, which will be submitted on behalf of the roads department and MBQ annually. MTO subsidy totals three hundred and sixty four thousand, two hundred dollars. Eligible expenditures must total a minimum of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, four hundred. Motion to approve this submission.
I'll make a motion, chief.
Second, third, wait. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. And I've been sharing with you all of the approval letters we're getting with the work for subsidy. There's been the busing deficit that's being covered. We'll start posting those letters and newsletter to these approval amounts based on our lobby. Because they see we get approved to go to lobbies, the community needs to know what the results are.
Should we table number nine, chief? Because it's a policy as well. And just until shoes.
We can do that.
Available.
Number nine can be table till shoe is available. The next item up for on the council is the there's a request here for from Donald Robertson to transfer from the Algonquas Pick Walk to Gone for station to the Mohawk's Bay Winnie. And the recommendation for membership is to pass, everything was in order. The question was, did he? Name's Donald Glenn Dwayne and Rosalind Baptiste Lee Mowers is the grandparents. And Bonnie says he needs to let us know who his parents are to show that they are Dwayne and Nancy's children to show that there's linkage there, but he does claim that Nancy and Dwayne Baptiste were his grandparents.
So do we need to wait until he provides his parentage?
To clarify that, I do know they did raise a chap on the reserve, but I didn't know that he had other children.
So should we defer?
Who's that again, chief? Dwayne?
Nancy and Dwayne Baptiste.
Oh, okay.
So we'll wait till we hear. Can we just defer this one for now?
Yep.
We hear back from membership? Aaron, who's second?
His parents.
Who seconded?
I will too.
Is anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Return. We just said, we need clarification for membership, yes.
Need clarification from membership and they're already aware or if you have a little confusion?
Chief said that they were
There, Bonnie's looking up some information about Donald Wayne Baptiste, that they have children.
True.
Okay.
Why is it in our regular? Oh. The details.
So the next item is number eleven. Subsidy per the Alcohol Gaming Commission Protocol. After discussion with the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario about the protocol for inspections conducted on our territory for retailers selling alcohol. We agreed that the procedure and the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario has produced the attached document for our review and agreement. An agreement. Please note that they have decided that it would make sense for this protocol to also be used for inspections for lottery retailers. See the attached email. So the email says it's from Adam Strongman, dated February the fifth, of Business Development. I just want to highlight that we structured the protocol document from examples we currently have in place. But can make some adjustments to the protocol if you or your council have any suggestions, additions or deletions. Also wanted to highlight that the inclusion of lottery, thought it would be best to be consistent with the approach with both liquor and lottery. As some of the advocate operators currently hold age alcohol gaming commission lottery sellers licenses and thought we should also provide the same twenty four hour notification if there's a need for inspection lottery. We can discuss more this afternoon and I can try to answer any questions if we have any. Adam? So do you want to get Adam on the line and have a discussion with him? Or are you good that they'll use the same inspection procedure for both alcohol and lottery?
Could we get Diana?
We can.
I have a couple of questions.
You want, okay, Diane then?
Yes, she's here.
And so the document that council is whereas, resident who wears Mohawk's Way Quitting Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario as the regulator of retail liquor sales and lottery retailers, retailer sellers to seek to develop a relationship based on respect and clear communication. Therefore, be resolved that the parties agree as follows. Purpose to develop a constructive, long-term relationship between MBQ and the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario by developing a process to enable the effective regulatory oversight of liquor and lottery retail sales on MBQ lands. The goals are to ensure that the MBQ business owners can participate in the regulated retail sale of liquor and lottery lottery products on MBQ lands in the public interest. To enable the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario needs to assess the MBQ lands to oversee the regulated activities of these businesses. Objectives: Develop a working relationship between MBQ and the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario. Ensure a meaningful, open, transparent dialogue between MBQ and the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario regarding the retail sale of liquor and sale of lottery products on MBQ lands. The principles: Nothing in this protocol shall be construed as to abrogate or derogate from the protection provided for average law treaty rights of the Mohawk people. Nothing in this protocol shall be construed as to derogate from the statutory mandate or interfere with the unfettered authority of the registrar or person designated as inspector under the Liquor License and Control Act two thousand and nineteen, or a person as an investigator under the Gaming Control Act nineteen ninety two, or the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario. The parties agree to work together to build trust, respect and collaboration and transparency. Process: The parties agree to regular consistent communication between the Alcohol Gaming Commission representatives of MBQ in the form of virtual or in-person meetings as agreed to by both parties. The purpose of these meetings shall be to facilitate effective communication between the parties with licensed entities on the Mohawk land, tiny tiny MBQ lands. To keep MBQ and the Alcohol Gaming Commission apprised of any development To keep MBQ and the Alcohol Gaming Commission apprised of any developments related to the retail sale of liquor and lottery products on MBQ lands. The parties agree that the mystery shopper activities do not require advance notice to MBQ before entering MBQ lands. MBQ consents. To the Alcohol Gaming Commission staff, every can, every can to cut regulatory activities for licensing and ongoing compliance. Otherwise, unless otherwise agreed, the alcohol will provide MBQ product, protocol contact and notice of entry. On MBQ lands at least twenty-four hours before entering the lands. In the event that the conflict arises with respect to the implementation of this protocol. The Alcohol Gaming Commissioner manager, compliance programs will work with the appointed person from the Qable. Protocol contacts to resolve the conflict amendment. With mutual agreement, the parties may amend this protocol in writing from time to time. Contacts for the business will be for the Mohawk's Bay of Queen, Diane Brent Winkler, Ardeno Mary, Chief of the Mohawk's Bay of Winnie. From the Alcohol Gaming, Adam Strongman and Jeremy Locke, Deputy Chief Operating Officer. Either party may terminate this pro- protocol by giving notice of termination to any other party for sixty days. The only thing I would think that the contact person should be the CEO for administrative purposes. And not myself, because if there's an issue, then council may have to deal with it, and so I shouldn't be the sole contact person.
They just sent it that way.
Can we have that changed?
Yeah, I think so.
Can we have that changed?
Change any of this, I'm, I'm putting it in the story, this is what they're proposing, and we can make whatever changes we want.
Because if there's an issue as a council, we have to collect to be able to deal with it as a council.
Yes.
What's our process now for people who have lottery in their businesses? Is there an inspection that they go through?
I, that was the first I heard of it, when I was talking with them, he said, well, follow lottery, and I went, okay, so maybe. I don't know what they've been doing, and I haven't asked any of them.
If we can, if we can find out from them what the process and what do they, what do they do, they're going into. Whatever they're looking for. Well, they probably have to reconcile with what, what, how much lottery tickets have been sold from that machine, and then they want their share of the money.
Yeah.
No.
Then be serviced by someone who delivers the new tickets. Like I think that's a regular ongoing, I really don't think they send in inspectors, I think it would have to be sort of an extreme. I don't think they come in on a regular basis for lottery, I've never heard that.
I'm just wondering why they would put it in now.
I think they just thought since they were putting a protocol together, they would.
Include everything.
Well, usually, usually anything that they license, so they, there's some kind of inspection periodically. Now, the only, the one thing here, they said that the, entering the reserve.
That they wouldn't have to give us twenty-four hours, not just for secret shoppers?
Their process be. And so that we like to find somebody selling liquor to minors, that would that be?
And if you want, we can say that, say they have to notify us, but it would be.
They could have to notify them, but not the vendors.
I did have that discussion with them, that what if we wanted to be notified by this about mystery shoppers? And they said by, by very fact that it's a mystery, they don't plan it. But they could give us maybe a couple of weeks window to say there would, there will be a shop coming within. It's all kept very hush, hush to not alert the, the vendor.
But rea- but really, we don't want people selling liquor to minors.
No.
No, my thought was, people come on our territory, non-members on our territory all the time. To purchase gas, to purchase tobacco, to purchase. Whatever, and we don't question them, they go into stores and they purchase whatever. So this mysteries shopper would just be somebody going in to purchase, and it would be checking to see, in fact, if they. They got checked, because, you know, they, they're underage, so. If you want notice about that, we can write that in, I just felt, I didn't, in my thought. Nobody's gonna look twice at somebody just walking into a store to buy whatever, we don't question, we often have people off territory. Coming into our locations buying things, so they wouldn't know if the person was there for gas or for cigarettes or what they were there for.
That, can we make it so they notify us if there is a store here that's selling the minors?
They would.
I'm assuming they would, myself.
Okay, well, yeah, let's not assume that, you're right, we can write that in, that we want to be notifying if.
I have another question too, on, that goes along with this, can this all be done in-house? So that we don't have an external inspector coming, or is that part of their agreement that they agree to when they sign up with the AGCO? Is that something that they would know is going to happen, this regulatory oversight?
It's what they, how they run their.
Yeah, so like, all the, all the, businesses who have signed up for that, have agreed to that and read it, and that's part of it.
Throughout Ontario, they've all agreed that they're going to have.
For everybody.
Yeah.
It, it worked the same thing, was that they, they have to have TSSA to do the inspection of their gas stations to sell the gas.
Right.
Just to be safe, so that's, that's their way of making sure people are safe. So, it is basically the same.
Yeah, let me get this straight then, so. We as council give them permission within, like, for a twenty-four hour notice, but only to counsel. That they let council know that they're coming in.
They have to let Angela and Diane know, not, it's best that council not know.
Okay, then, then they let you and Angela, CEO, acting CEO, sorry. Know that they are coming in, so that we can't have the members complaining that, well, you know, whatever, but. Surprise visits are, just to make sure that our, our. The vendors are abiding by the rules.
Correct.
And then if the rules are broken, council is be, is notified.
That's what we're gonna make sure we ask.
That we, that we are notified, and then we take the steps as council to. Take away the privilege of selling alcohol, you know, or, or lottery, whatever it is.
I suspect they would be penalized by the AGs.
But right now, right now, we don't approve the councils that are, the businesses that are selling lottery, lottery products. They're already in the stores now.
That's just what I wondered, like, how that happens or why it's combined, so it might be better to kind of keep it out. Yeah, if we never got it out, then I, I would not like to have the policy reflect both, I would just keep it to the alcohol.
Just keep it to the alcohol.
So have that removed out of this protocol?
Yeah, if we've never been involved previously, and that's up to the business owners.
So then, do we have a motion then to approve it just for alcohol only and not lottery?
Wait, wait, not yet.
You're okay with the mystery shoppers, because if you want notification of the mystery shoppers.
Well, they, they, they should notify you and Angela. Yes, they not, not the council, just, just you guys.
So we do want notification of mystery shoppers, if, like I said, it'll be two weeks out, we won't know the exact date or time.
Best for you guys to know, because if something does come out, and they need a.
Then you can, if the store owner calls you and say, what the heck, you know, you can say, well, no, they came during this period.
We, we knew about them, and, yeah.
That you've granted them to, the permission to be here, I feel like every other entity requests permission to be here. This is what I'm gonna do, this is the intent, and we should know that.
Okay, but the businesses, the businesses who are licensed. The businesses who are, are licensed, or they should know, know though, that there can be times when mystery shoppers will be coming in. Just to make sure that they're following the rules, they should be notified, that's part of it, that goes hand in hand with the license.
That's what I'm wondering, whether they.
They should be, they should be aware that that can, that there can be spot checks to make sure by the ministry that they are following the rules.
Are they?
I would have.
And not selling, and not selling to minors.
That they would be told that they're going to have inspections from time to time, and that they will, they will be checked for that, time, time to time. So I'm assuming the vendor, but I'll double check that.
Now, is this only people that sign up with the AGCO, or is it gonna be everybody that Mr. Sharp's going to?
They only have control over whoever's applied to them to become a vendor. Anybody else is operating.
When you ask one of their licenses, then you have to follow the rules.
And, and, and like we're saying, I would expect they've been told completely what that involves, which is mystery shoppers.
Because the council, the council is not giving them the license to do that. The council is saying that they recognize that they, the councils have any objection to them doing that.
Right, we're just saying we will allow them to sign up with the Ontario government to fall under their agreement should they want. So this is where you want to watch how, why, how involved you are on that.
Because a number of years ago, under, when Chief Earl Hill's council met, we went and met with Shirley Mason and. Jim Beckett, who was the lawyer for the Department of Justice to see if the council could pass a liquor control bylaw. And the answer was no, they had no authority under the ID act, because it was delegated to the province. Under Canada's constitution to regulate the sale of alcohol.
Yeah, it's very similar to the TSSA issue.
And so, so from the time the community center was built, until back in this, in the seventies. They've always had to apply for a special occasions permit to have alcohol in the community center.
Right.
And so the sale of alcohol has been regulated under that system for over fifty years.
Heard, yes.
And also, also, also the council back.
See the advertisements up front, right.
And back in the early seventies, they had to have a referendum vote to make the reserve wet. Because before the alcohol wasn't allowed to be on the reserve unless the band members voted to make it a wet reserve. And have alcohol, and they did that here, there was a vote at, at the old council house to allow that. So do we have, do we know of how many businesses are selling that have not applied or have not come to council for? A resolution. Oh, yeah, a resolution to, to be able to sell, like, in a, in a sense of bootlegging. They're, they're selling that were, that they didn't come to us, as some have come to us asking. To be able to sell, so we tell them that they have to go by the rules and regulations. I think, I think we should, if we can recognize those establishment or those businesses that are selling. That have not come to us, that are not following the rules, I think we should get a letter to them stating that. That they are not excluded from, from bypassing the rules. Everybody else is following the rules, you also have to follow the rules if you want to sell alcohol. If they do not, well then, then we have to, in a sense of shutting down for bootlegging. I, I don't know what your, what, what's the rest of council thought on that, because. You get some that follow the rules, which is great, and then you have a few others that don't follow rules, because they don't think they have to.
But my understanding was that you at this table are enabling. Some of our businesses to.
Sell alcohol.
Apply to sell alcohol through the LCBO. System, and there are regulations.
That's right.
Not that we're telling them how to do it, or when, or where that, we're making up the rules. We're not, we're just allowing them to follow the LCBO rules. So what you're talking about is a little different, because then are we, are we creating rules and enforcing them? Or are we asking them, I mean, I think we could send a letter to invite them to apply for an LCBO. Designation like the other ones.
The best thing would be for the, the people, the regulator to come and have a meeting with people, businesses. That are currently operating and people that may want to sell alcohol out of business to a business, a meeting where they can have their questions answered about how the, the system operates. And we should have put out a communication in the newsletter to the community on how this really works.
We can certainly do that, but we, you know, you can't lead a horse to water if they decide they don't, they don't want to apply.
Right now, that's the only system that council's recognizing.
Yes, and we can, we can say that.
Council, council's not recognizing any bootleg operation.
We could invite them to apply, there's nothing wrong with that.
Let's just, let's just apply and, yeah, basically have at it, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal. If you want a license from the province, and there, the blessing to have alcohol in your store. Without legal consequences, and you're willing to follow that system, then you have to follow their rules, you can't sell to minors. And do we have that letter then? Okay, well then, that's what I'm asking, is if we get that letter done and get it out to the businesses. Thank you. Just that, if they want to sell alcohol, this is what you have to do. The protocol to do it, and all is good. And that you're subject to. And then follow the rules, and then exactly, and let them know that they will be subject to, at, once in a while, periodically. Maybe an inspection or the.
We won't tell them that.
Mystery shopper. But that is.
If they apply, they will get informed about the process.
Can happen period, from time to time, to make sure, just ensure they're following the rules. Just to make sure that they're sticking to the rules.
So can we? Don't want it to seem that there are rules, it's the LCBO's rule.
Then you write it that way.
So can we defer this just until we get clarification on some of those questions?
Yeah, oh, so I'm getting clarification on whether the vendors are informed about these inspections. And that there potentially is mystery shoppers, and I, I believe, I know they know they have to have an inspection. Initially, and, and probably annually or whatever. I just don't know about the mystery shoppers, and.
Because when you, when you apply for that, from them, and councils letting them do it through a resolution. They are also agreeing to apply, follow those rules.
Yeah, it goes hand in hand with their.
They should sign something saying they're willing to follow those rules.
They do between them and the AGC, yeah, so that's their agreement, we're just saying, okay, we support that.
And the, the lottery stuff, if we can take that out.
Oh, yes, and remove the lottery.
And just what their process is now.
Because, because they're already there, and we've never been consulted on that, yeah.
Correct, so we would be starting, yeah, okay, I guess.
Is it, is it, like, I was just looking at our council meeting, so. I guess next week is a little too soon to have this all done.
Well, I can have the letter written and the mystery shopper thing resolved to know whether.
We, could we, then, like Erin has said, let's defer this, or actually, just put it on a whole, not whole. But just defer it until next council meeting on the eighteenth. And then we can see the letter and what you have in place.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
So regardless of whether they're informed about the mystery shopper, do we still want the two-week notification that they're coming? We still want that process in there?
I think you need to know.
Yeah, okay.
And, and make a note that they come to you, yourself and CEO Andrew.
Change to, to the CEO, yeah.
To the CEO. Because that's administration, that's not anything that will call.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine, and we want the two-week notice. Okay, and everything else in the protocol seems okay?
Okay, it's been set, moved by Erin to defer this till next council.
I'll second that, chief.
The eighteenth. Okay, anyone opposed to defer to the next council? Seeing none, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Could we have a five-minute break, please? Yeah, five minutes.
Okay, council is back in session. It is now eleven forty-five. Tanya King Miracle is the Director of Community Services, Acting Director of Community Services, and she's here now to discuss the rules and procedures and committees for rules and procedures for committees of council. Shu, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Tanya, and it is, actually this agenda item was put on because council requested that it come on to look at the definition of community member versus member of MBQ, so this really, this is your discussion, not mine. I provided you with the document in an updated format. And I told you in the sidebar that the current policies use the term community member to mean any individual living in the territory and registered member of Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney is whom we refer to as, as members. Or we'll say MBQ member, but that's the registered member. So that's the language we're using in all the other policies. This is a very dated rules and procedure. It's actually not a policy. And it is from nineteen eighty-seven was the last time it was revisited. But we revisit, when I started, we looked at it. But when it came to council, no changes were made. So there, I mean, there's a few things to consider within it, but ultimately at the last meeting, it is clearly wanting to look at those two definitions, so that's why it's here today.
And so this is to assist committee members who are appointed by the council, correct, to these committees?
To assist committee members. And then from here, the committees would develop their own mandate.
So what you're saying is that we appoint the committee members and they develop their own rules how they operate?
No, they develop their mandate in, in terms of the work that they're going to do.
I see.
So this will say, hey, establish a committee, and then the housing selection committee, for example, and you know, give example, but that is they have a process in terms of how they, what the work is that they're about to do.
So once again, you're saying that a member is just status or non-status as long as they're living, or let me get, get that one.
A community member is anybody who lives here.
Anybody.
Non-member, anybody.
Yep.
When we refer to an MBQ member, we're referring to a registered member in Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney, and all our policies are written up. So we'll say a registered member, or we'll say an MBQ member, put in that mission habit as a registered member. If we say community member, we mean.
Okay, that's good.
Talking about me.
Okay. Um, then, then I'm, I'm satisfied with that, because we've had that before where committees were made up of community members, and there was a question that do they not have to be status? And, and which is not true, because it says community member. Okay, that's good, thank you.
And we can, like, we can add both definitions in there, but that's up to, she wanted to see what the policy says, and the policy actually says a member means a community member of voting age.
Which we should probably take out too, because I don't, there's going to be committees that we would want youth on.
Yeah, I think, I think that's just a reference to age.
Yeah, to pop it out.
Just an adult, but I think anymore you want that youth voice.
Yeah.
So, can we, can we?
So maybe we should.
So, so when you say a community member, what, what does that imply though? In terms of rights?
It means a member who is serving in a community.
Chris?
So a homeless person from Kingston moves into our park last night, technically he's now a community member. Technically, he's entitled to be on all our committees. That's what I'm hearing.
True. If that's.
So then how do we?
If that's the extreme, you choose to define it, then that's the, then yes, in the extreme, that would be correct.
Good minus ten.
In the, in the nature of a policy where you're putting out a call for individuals to join a committee, if you want it to be restricted to MBQ members, then we make that definition members only.
Yeah, because.
Totally up to you.
This, this.
Why you wanted this brought here, so we can do that.
So I guess the people live here are said to be the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney. And to me, the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney are the registered members who have a a status member and say they belong to the committee who, who's here. To, that's why I think we need a, a policy about a community resident instead of member.
Well, it's pretty straightforward.
Recognize that they live here, that they reside here, community resident, resident and a community member, I would think means somebody who belongs to the band.
Yes, and that's what you said last week, and that's in the sidebar, or two weeks ago, whenever that was. And so, but that's up to you guys to decide what it is you want and who you want on your committees. That's a decision you have to make.
So it's, it's at the discretion of council.
Like, I honestly have no problems with anybody that lives here being on a committee. Like, whether they're an MBQ member or not, they, they still live here, in my opinion.
There can be people that need to be on committees because they have a particular expertise and can lend to the work of the committee.
Depending on the the committee too, like maybe there is a, a case that we need it to be just MBQ member specific, but it might be even just case by case basis, because I agree too, I think that there are people that have lived in this community their entire lives and have a lot to contribute. And they are community member, not MBQ registered members, I agree with O'Gore, and then also just leave it up to council or committee depending.
Yeah, so that would be upon us for wording, to, to let it know that it is MBQ members or community members, so, so when the, when the ball drops, that, that would be on us, be in our wording of who we want to see on the committee, and that's it?
Yeah, the word member implies belonging to the group. And to me, those, the people have residency rights, which is different than the rights of the people who are members.
Well, it will be as laid out in these definitions and streamlined across all of them, and then we'll use whatever word is chosen.
My advice to the council is simply to use community resident and community member. Member would be mean that you're a registered member of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney. That's what a community member is to be.
But are these the policy? What do you use in all the policies?
Registered member and then.
Could be somebody that's off the reserve too, and is, is not from, like, that's not on the territory. So you'd have to say registered.
Registered, but registered member with the Mohawks, but that's a community member. Because the community is the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney, and that's the whole band list. But community resident are the people who live here. Chris?
Chief, we should strive for consistency. If you want to apply to rent an MBQ rental house, you must be a registered member of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney to apply. But you don't have to be a member to look upon those applications and have input on which Mohawks can live here. You just have to live in a community, and I have no issue with the argument that someone's lived here fifty years and contributed to the community, absolutely. But where you look in your crystal ball and say that some guy moved into a car last night, he's still a member. How do you differentiate fifty years from five minutes ago? Five minutes ago, someone lived in this community, they're a member.
I have a crystal ball, but thank you for that.
It's just lacking, it's just totally inconsistent, and this should be for the community.
And what it all comes down to is wording, Chris, is like we've already stated.
Exactly, at the end of the day, it always comes down to wording. What's wrong, what's right, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, what's a community member? A member means I have a card, I have a number, otherwise I'm a guest. And Earl Hill would be rolling in his grave that we're having this discussion and other people are not speaking up in behalf of the Mohawks.
We're not that, we're not that dumb, Chris, to, to put somebody on a community, on a community committee that just moved into the park with their car. You think we're that dumb to, to do that? Somebody that's lived here for like thirty years and is a part of the community, I see no problem of them sitting on a committee. Because they've been here, they know what the traditions are, they know where that's at, so you're going just a little bit too far with moving to somebody that is from Kingston, non-native, and just pitching a tent. I, I think that's a little bit extreme.
How do you define long-term living here?
Sensible.
What's sensible, what's sensible to you, not sensible to somebody else?
But I think.
Ten year, twenty year, five minutes, where do you draw the line?
The sensibility is having the option to decide. It's the option. We've put it in this policy that a community member, a member, depending on what the scenario is, all of those come for approval anyway. So if you want them to list, FYI, I just came from Kingston, I'm homeless and live in a car on their application, then that's up to you, but these have been put in place, these outlines, and as long as it's consistent, which Shu has put in here what the consistent wording would be, then it comes to council, it's, the committees are brought forward and then it's approved, as it has been in the past.
To Chris's point, we do have to protect the rights of our band members, because something can be argued that council is recognizing something that may not be intentional, and so we have to be very, very clear with those distinctions.
Mentioned a name, chief, there's a Mohawk that was overlooked. Whole blooded Mohawk lived her all her life.
It's my name is Bob.
You shouldn't have to be a member to apply. If you don't have to be a member to apply, to be on the board, why would you have to be a member to apply? It's just inconsistent, totally inconsistent.
So there's a member here who's, who's a member, she's resided, grew up here, she works here. She recently learned of a position on the rental housing selection committee, and she's aware of an indigenous housing challenges, open-minded and community-focused, and can also attend meetings when scheduled. Like to be part of the housing selection committee to help ensure fairness and open discussion to, in the, in the selection process, and believe that my knowledge and commitment to my community, that I would be an asset. Thank you for consideration of this opportunity. I look forward to hearing back from you. So this was written back in October. Was she selected to be on this committee?
She received no response.
Okay.
It's there. It's there right now.
So.
So you gave it to chief, did you give it to Kelly?
No.
This is the first that I've seen this. So I guess, so what we should do is.
Now from back in October.
I just received it.
Okay, so do you want to pass this to Angela for a response? Hand that down, please. So we should, when people apply for committees, thank them for applying and let them know whether they were selected or not selected. If they weren't selected, what was the reason? Is there were people more qualified or than they were, or what, but there should be some communication. Is there were people more qualified or than they were, or what? But there should be some communication. And it looks like right now there is none. That's administrative function to do that. Once it's been to council, it's an administrative function following. So that, that, the right, letter writing needs to be delegated to somebody on on staff to write these letters.
Yeah, that's another thing that we, um, that we, we really, really need to do is, is correspondence with, with the, the community. Like you said, if somebody applies to a, uh, to, um, a position, if they do or they don't, well, then you write them back and see if you were accepted or you weren't accepted. Correspond, and that has to do with telephone calls also. If, uh, somebody, uh, makes a telephone call here and wants to speak to, uh, let's just say, housing for example. And they leave their number, their name and number, housing should get back to them.
Well, I can tell, tell you, I.
This for Chris while we're on this, exactly, you do, we know, you always answer your phone, but just to stay on this one topic, chief. I think it could be even so much as the wording that's put on the posting, that if you are not contacted, then you weren't eligible, because in the instance of in the instance of applying for things, you don't all, you get a receipt of confirmation that we've received your application, for example. Um, but there's several hundred people that apply for certain positions, and it's impossible to reach everyone and say, you didn't qualify for this job. But that's why they put that in the, in the posting to say, if you are not contacted, you weren't eligible for this position. So that is communicated, or whatever the wording.
You know, you'll be contacted if you're.
If you, yes, if you are, just because, it would take days and days and days and days and days, and the staff just do not have the capacity to be able to do that, just for an example for that position, but I do know what you mean, like, I'm sure there's a way that we can make it clear of why they aren't being contacted for this.
Usually there, you don't have people breaking down the doors to sit on these committees. We don't usually have, sometimes they have a hard time finding people that have the time to sit on committees.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I just think, if, unless there's a huge volume, I would prefer to see everybody get a letter to thank them for applying, to acknowledge them, and to say they were successful or not successful.
It's just a, it's just a little bit of a professional curia, curia. That word.
Courtesy.
Curtis, courtesy, e, um, to, uh, just to reply and.
No, the other.
Thank you, um.
But not for everything, but maybe for this, because it's a smaller volume, but. Yeah.
I, I want, I want to let you know, sometimes I get up at four o'clock in the morning to keep up with the emails, so I get up and get a drink of water. I will do my emails, so I keep, keep up, and I answer my emails, and I'm inviting council to do the same. Because sometimes I have a hard time getting you to answer your emails.
I tried to do that at two o'clock, chief.
Yep.
Anyway, to get back to this, specifically this situation, I think we just need to streamline all of the policies and the wording, and make sure that we're using the correct wording on all of our postings and our discussions as well.
Yeah.
Is what I believe.
Okay, so we, we, we need to give Shu some direction here. What, do you want, a community member is just anybody living here? Uh, is that going to be a community member? And then I guess then would be when you specify registered status members.
We already have it in the policy.
Say status if they're registered members.
Registered members.
Which is currently the terminology.
That's the two, that's the two different.
But you want to do.
So if we change the policy to registered members, what happens to these committees that already have non-registered members on them?
I don't think we have to, we just have to streamline the policies, right? Because we are already using registered members in our other policies.
We use registered members in our other policies. One, like, program policies. Um, and if there's the need to refer to a community member, we use that term, a community member.
It, it's the word member that bothers me.
But it's, the chief has an issue with the word member, and the chief wants to change the term.
I just want, I.
An MBQ member, which would be.
I, I just want to, I just want to make sure legally down the road that, that when you imply, refer to them as members. That you're not implied, that, that they're not going to argue that, that we would, you've already accepted me as a member there for.
Make me a community resident over a community member, would I start to have wrong reference point to?
Yeah, would you have?
As a community member, I just feel welcome in the community, and I get to participate in things.
Like, I'm not.
Then maybe I start pushing on everything, like, housing.
I personally don't have an issue with the people sitting on community if they have a particular expertise to bring to the community, would do the community good. I got no quarrel with that. I just want to make sure when we imply that they're members, that they can't use that as a footing to argue for other rights that are for the registered members. You have to be careful with the use of this word member.
I think it's the same issue with the word resident. That's why the definitions need to be.
I, I see what Shu is saying, and, and, uh, her, the saying of, uh, resident is very cold. The, 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 the word of member is inviting, and that, you know, they're here, they're welcomed. Um, I think the whole thing can be, um.
But when you say resident too, it also cuts out people that don't live here, like that are still members.
A, well, a, a status resident is like.
A community member.
How do you differ, because when you're talking about community, um, like I had mentioned before, that's somebody that's not living on the territory, but is still status.
Shu had said it's MBQ, um, member. So if it says specifically MBQ member, that encompasses everybody. If you live here, if you're off territory, and we can use that.
So that would be status though.
That would be status.
MBQ registered member. Okay, that would be good, and then just a member of Tainanega is two different things in my eyes.
Yes. The community member.
Can we go with that? Is that simple enough for everybody?
Well, it may be one thing in, in, in layman's terms, but it might mean a different thing in the law.
But as long as we have it written, based on law, based on our policies, then we can clarify if it comes to council. If somebody questions it, we'll know how to clarify it because it will be same across the board.
I don't think anybody's taken us to court over. Or that is just.
It's happened before in Gannawaki.
Well.
And it happened at Six Nations.
Example, when you have a residency.
Bylaw.
Code that they have, and the membership code that they have, and that their KKR is not it's like separate from what IFC has for their membership roster.
Here, for, for, for many years, we, we accept that people can live with whoever they marry. As long as they don't make legal, great legal issues in the community. And then, if, if they're not a member, then the council has the privilege of giving them a council resolution to, to say you're no longer welcome to live here. And we've done that many times. So.
So where do we leave with this? It's just a streamline.
Or leaves it open to non-registered members.
So what rights do the community members have that are different than the registered members?
I think that might be a.
Community members are non-registered members, so they have their own on whatever.
And then registered, registered members are. That they, they're registered on the band list for the, the Mohawks of the Bay. They are members of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney.
That's right. Registered members are Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney. There is, to chief's point, there are certain committees that are deliberately open to community members, meaning people who live here, because you're trying to recruit expertise on those committees, so.
And I see nothing wrong with that.
I think it, yeah, I think we just need to specify going forward if there is a committee that you need to be specifically a registered member for, um, for whatever reason, we'll have that choice as it comes up.
Then we state just, just that.
We'll just make sure.
It's, it's easy enough done.
Yeah, just make sure the correct wording is going out.
Just wording.
Yep.
Okay.
So I have a section for a community member and a section for registered member?
I have the definitions in here, yeah, so I would, so where it has committee member. I would change one community member, MBQ member, on each of them, take out the reference to age. And to update policy, take out.
So really, really, a committee member is anybody appointed to be on that committee. That can be a, a member, registered member or a non-registered. That's a committee member.
So when the posting, when the committee goes down.
But eligibility to apply.
Would be.
Where you specify.
If you're going to create a, a finite committee, although you might want expertise from community member who maybe is a CA, you might say, actually, we want to keep that tight, so we're going to make that registered members only.
Yeah.
I'm sure with that.
People, so each committee then has to be mindful of.
Language.
Yeah, and take out the H letter.
And the other.
So, but what we need, Shu, though, is who is eligible to apply to sit down committees of council? Do you have to be a registered band?
That's what we just.
Anybody who, so.
She's going to put both definitions in the policy so that we can determine if we only want registered members or community members.
That'll go on the posting.
Yes.
Yes.
And that would be the terms of reference for that committee.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Chris?
So you want registered members only?
Yeah.
And that, like, if that's.
That doesn't appear to be.
It's, it's consistent with, you have to be a band member to apply. Folded, black and white. But you don't have to be a band member to be on a committee to select or oversee which Mohawks can.
Also, under the Indian Act, Chris says, um, under the Indian Act, you have to be a registered member to be a counselor, but you don't have to be a registered member to be chief.
No, two wrongs don't make a right.
Anybody can be the chief.
Anybody can be the chief.
Anybody can be the chief of the community, so what does it matter if anybody's on our committee? That reports back to the.
Saying is, the analogy you're using, it's wrong to say that a, a non-native should be, could be a chief, like.
I, I still go with what we're, I, I still go with what we have, I mean, that's, whatever.
I, I'm sure a good lawyer would have a field day with this.
Okay, well, because, because what it is, is going to eventually erode the Mohawk rights. It's just you let them in a little bit, a bit, a bit, and all of a sudden, they're there, they're there, and all of a sudden, same rights as the Mohawks.
So it, it sounds like we need a legal opinion on this whole issue because it's, would it doesn't extend other rights or can it imply other rights that are not intended?
No.
Because right, right now, we don't have, we don't have a residency law ever passed by council, even though there's been seventeen drafts.
So I would, yeah, like, and so, but you want to call everybody a resident, and I'm not sure that that is helpful.
Because now there's equality of members, and there are certain rights that are implied to community member. If you're a member of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney, you have certain rights to access to programs, and if somebody else is also characterized as a community member, how come they don't? Then do we get into this whole inequality thing by classifying them as members? It's this word member, what.
We're not classifying them as members of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney, and if you were to look, you'll see that even programs at CWC are now making a diff, a distinction between who's eligible to access their programs. So maybe something was open a little broader before, now they have to narrow the focus due to funding restrictions and otherwise, so they are kind of clamping down and saying, no, you're no longer eligible. So there's several things that people who live here can't access because of that reason, and so whether they go to their own community, they go to municipality, county program, whichever, that's how they'll be dealt with it. I feel like part of it's overthinking, to Chris's point, it, miracles, it's if that's a specific committee, and that's a specific issue to this, this is how we've operated since nineteen eighty-four, when the rules and procedure were first approved. And then committees from there establish themselves. There's probably other committees that have people who are not.
But you know, if we, if we go back.
Stand down after all this time, like, that's the.
Yeah, and, and the, the problem that you have right now with this whole, with status is there's a lot of people who gained status that were not Indian, because they married an Indian man. And so when we go back, look back at our first school committee that we had here, I mean, there were two members that were on that school, and two of them were non-native women who married Indian men and gained status. They had status, but they weren't, they weren't Mohawk.
They were registered members of the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney.
And so, so then, if another, another person says, well, I'm, I'm a non-native person, I married an Indian, I can't be on that committee because I don't have status.
That's right.
So then, there's, that's why this issue of status.
Saying that, they have to be registered members.
It's the way the whole Indian Act is operated, that, that there is this discrimination there. And that's why you use the word member. I just want to make sure that legally it cannot be interpreted as meaning something more than what we intend here. If somebody didn't get something, could they use that as an example of, to bolster, to bolster their case?
So you want to know if, you want a legal opinion on whether we should use.
Is there any?
Or member.
Member, yeah.
For others living here who are not registered members and want to participate.
Yeah, want to participate in the committee, what's the word, if?
Or, or, yeah, I guess, or.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying this smoothly, just what do we call it? What do we call it? I'm not, I'm saying that if they have expertise, they can contribute to the committee, that's good, because we've done that. We seek outside advice all the time, what we do. So if they're on the committee, that's just another weird place where they're giving advice. But it's the use of the word member that kind of bothers me.
Well, how are you getting?
I, I know what it means locally, like, they live here and they're part of people, so I get that. But in the law, if somebody wanted something and used that as an example why they recognized me as a member, then how, then I want my membership to be equal to the rest of them. That, that's what I, I don't know, because I know there's all kinds of issues out there, and we have a lot of people in that category, and I don't want to leave room for that kind of argument to advance blindsided.
Okay, so who do you want us to get a legal opinion from?
Probably Alan Pratt. Alan Pratt, maybe.
I would have, okay.
Or Jordan Sewell.
Like, what's her name? Sarah?
Okay, T probably better than.
It's the use of the word member.
You would think that they would have a little more expertise than it than Alan, who's not.
Yeah, and I think regardless, if whatever comes back, it's, you can still have the same decision to make.
Yeah, we will. So I, I'd like to get, we'd need to mostly get clarity on this use of the word member.
Yeah, but it will still be the same discussion on who are you allowing to participate on committees, because I still feel it's not agreed to here. So we're going to do this, but we're still going to have to come back and have this discussion.
I think you have to ask that question first, chief.
Okay, then, so we'll get it. Question of legal opinion, is there a move for that?
We've already got, um, um, a flyer over for, um, people to.
Look.
For the arena committee.
Go ahead and take, take the names, like, I'm not saying they can't be on it, but maybe what we call it is different, what we then remember. Because we're giving them equal status to the ones who are registered members, when, in terms of applying, they're all the same. They live here, so they're all the same.
I don't, I don't.
For a committee, only for a committee.
Registered member. I see that totally differently. Just because of one word.
Sometimes one word, Chris, in the law can make a big difference.
Well, then let's spend some money and find out the law then.
In addition to that, just on this, obviously it has to be updated, you would have seen both versions in your drive. Um, so we've updated it into the new format. Those initial questions that are in there, the things that will take out updates and language, but the other piece I was wondering about is if you want, if it was possible to add beyond attendance, other reasons to have a community, to have a committee member removed.
If they're convicted of some kind of heinous criminal act, they murdered somebody here.
I'm thinking breach of conflict of interest, the absenteeism of conduct as well within the committee, if it, if it's disruptive.
Confidentiality.
And breach confidentiality or conflict of interest.
Absolutely.
And of course resignation, because there's nothing.
And if, or convicted of a, convicted of a indictable offense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so we can, so that, well, that matches, that matches the Indian Act, but yeah, we can add it in as language there, but I just, I was just kind of wondering if in updating that, we can add that in.
Absolutely.
For them to be able to be removed.
Put, put it, put it in there convicted of an indictable offense.
Sure, for sure.
What about conduct within the community, like? Something that happened inside the community that wasn't a criminal offense.
So I have, um, conduct inconsistent with the values and governance of N B Q. I didn't know. I didn't. Put it in, it'd be a discussion point, but yeah, I just, it's just something that now I was going through it. Again, looking at old notes that we had discussed years ago, that part was missing, and I'd like to put it back in, we can send it to Sarah for her opinion on, are we giving rights to someone by calling them a member or a resident? That could come back. And then bring it back. I haven't reached out to her recently.
So we'll need a motion that we're gonna get just clarity from this word member to put it that to rest, then is there a mover and sec- or second to do that?
I move, Chief. Prefer to come from Alan Pratt, because he knows, uh, land claims, et cetera.
But this isn't land claims.
I know, but he knows the difference.
He's well schooled in native laws.
So is O K T.
Yeah, they, it doesn't matter to me either, whether Sarah Mainville is.
Alan would probably do it for nothing.
No, he wouldn't.
Okay, so is there a second for that Chris's motion then to get a legal opinion to make sure we're not on a banana peeling here? Is there a seconder? Okay, then there is no second to the motion. So I guess we go with community member, we take, take our chances.
Well, registered member and community member. I'll bring back those other changes as well, updated. Further.
Sounds good.
Okay, now the next.
There's another one for you.
The next, there's another one, just hold on. So what will the motion read then on this here? The council then approve this, this.
Continue to update the policy and bring it back.
Update the, yeah, sorry, update the policy and to bring it back to council for review.
We'll move that.
Oh, that.
A second.
Okay, motion is carried then. The next item was the employment and training policy revisions. What are the revisions to the policy? What was revised? Could, could we, um, maybe color code, what is the revisions?
It is, it's all in the comments that says new section.
Okay, my copy isn't color coded, so.
Is your copy, is yours black and white, or is it?
Yeah.
Mine is black.
Yours, that's not even the same as this one. This one, it's all broken down to what it's changed from, changed to.
I'm just wondering what's in the council binder.
Yeah, no, 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 there's, it is color coded in the, in the thing, but it's not for, um, sorry, it's quite a way down, so I'm paged. It's the first one, I think.
Well, like on the top list, there's, you want to add Canadian.
I see. So what, what, what's the first revision? Should we just walk us through it?
Okay, so in section, um, nine point five.
Nine point six.
Says nine point five on the chart. So in nine point five, we added one part where we want organizations to update regularly as well, and that was just kind of like a side note, although it's in the steps. We also just.
In the, like, this is sign six.
Oh, it is, okay, oh, you know what? So bottom of page ten, organization must provide updates regularly. It is in the program requirements, but, um, the manager asked that it be added upfront as well, just so it's like in one of the bullet points. Visually. The next one is.
Just wait till we get caught up, which we're just signing it. Wait, it doesn't go down to nine? Okay, I'll follow along, just tell me about this here, Chris. It doesn't scroll down to nine. We're trying to roll it up, it didn't go down to nine. So what was the first one, should, should please?
Bottom of page ten, Chief.
I'm sorry?
The bottom of page ten.
Bottom of page tech, page ten, okay.
It says, organization must provide updates regularly. New, and just added there, so visually it's at a glance that it's a requirement. It is in the steps, but it, I was asked to add it in to repeat that.
Okay.
The next section, nine point seven, the, the section is new, although it's a part of the other services. It was asked that it be separated out. So it's not new, new, it's just new in the policy to be clear, to stand alone, because it might not be relevant to other places where it's already.
Okay, and there's employment startup for P P E, working clothing, other job-related expenses for now, maximum five hundred?
Yep.
That's, uh, when was that updated the last time?
This whole section, nine point seven, the entirety is new. What it is, is where this fell into each of the other opportunities.
Okay.
For clients. You can actually just pull this out because an individual client may just need this part.
Okay.
And so, so it's making it visually there for them to.
Okay.
Anything. The next changes are in nine point eight. Under eligible programs, adding accredited Canadian post-secondary. And then programs offered in the United States may be considered on a case-by-case basis, and other international programs will not be considered.
Is, is that, does this, because this money comes from government? This is only if there's no other program offered in a Canadian college or university or institution?
It's on a case-by-case basis, I think depending if there's funding available.
Okay.
And so later in the financial assistance piece that speaks to that, is that for United States programming? A one-time bursary.
Yeah, we could, because I, I know.
Be considered.
Like, I know in post-secondary education, they could not use the money to educate somebody in the United States, they have to be a Canadian institution, unless there was no other university or education institution candidate that provided that service.
So how would that work, say, like, if a person wanted to be a vet, and Gulf University only accepts four people a year? But in Texas, they take thirty students a year.
And you get accepted in Texas.
And you get accepted in Texas. Right? Like, it's.
Yeah. So in this one, they're adding that one-time bursary, so it's just, it's a, it, the one, one time if they have.
Okay.
Might be considered like that.
Okay, the, the only thing I'd like you to do with that one about the United States is check with Steve Williams to make sure that doesn't violate, violate the, uh,
It doesn't.
That they're, they're funding.
We're adding it in because it's been requested, it's been allowable, so we're adding.
Okay.
It in, so it gets no longer one-off. The one time there, the financial assistance deadlines was adding April one for spring start. It wasn't there before, but they, it's an opportunity now.
Okay. There's deadlines to apply, I see.
Yeah, we just added April, the other ones were always there.
That's, that's a good thing.
And then the rest of the changes are in the appendix, which you don't really need to worry about, but they are in red. Awesome, living allowance, twenty hours or more per week in class, just to define what. Being there, um, and then the weekly allowances were bumped up, I think.
Okay, and is there any changes to the youth aspect of this?
The youth.
The youth programs? And the youth is someone fifteen to thirty?
Yeah. Um, and then yeah, the, the additional assistance on the.
And there's a checklist there.
And the appendix. And that. It.
Okay. So then.
Dependencies, you don't need to really worry about, because those are changing or something on what the program has available. That's what they don't often, we don't bring appendices back to council.
Does council then approve the, the, this policy, the revised policy? If so, we'll need a motion.
A motion.
Gori?
A second.
Is there anyone who's opposed? And we'll publish this on our newsletter, so people know what it is.
I'll return it to the manager, and that will be, they will take.
Yeah, I think it should be posted, so they know what our policy is. Because community members have say, said to me, they don't see anything of what our policies are.
Yeah, we don't publish, we only publish. The only policies on the website are ones where, yeah, like, not all of them are there. But how many is, was that? Do we see things are there, and I'm, and Kenny had some for the whole.
Okay, thank you, Web Chief, for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to number.
Twelve.
Twelve. There's a Hicks Morning invoice here to pay for fourteen hundred and eight dollars for legal matters, eight human resources legal matters for one thousand eighty-eight dollars and hundred ninety-two dollars, for a total of two thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars. Is there a motion to pay?
All motion.
Aaron, who will second it?
I'll second.
Ogari? Is there anyone who's opposed? Anyone opposed? Sing none, the motion is carried. The Alan Pratt invoice. Two thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents related to surrender twenty-four, six hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents related to Culberson. Motion to pay?
No motion, Chief.
I'll second that, Chief.
Curtis and Chris Brandt? Is there anyone who's opposed? Anyone opposed? Sing none, the motion is carried. The Derek Wong invoice from Average Business Network, fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars related to economic development, and seven thousand related to economic development. Is there a motion to pay?
All motion.
Aaron?
I'll second.
And Ogari?
Negative, Chief.
Chris Miracle, negative? Do you want to state the reason?
Same as the last time, Chief.
Okay. Motion is carried. Oh, there's, uh, February the twelfth is the, is the local council business meeting. That's tomorrow night, February the eighteen, we have two members attending, as Shelley's already mentioned. February the eighteenth, is the, the regular council, and February the twenty-sixth is the local business meeting. That's it for the public portion of council. Motion to go in private.
All motion. Oh, I didn't see it.
What's that?
What is it?
Is there something else? What is it, Shelley?
And I'm gonna declare conflict, because it's in relation to me, so.
We'll just wait till we get that item.
I had no idea.
You got a lot of needs.
I was the last kid, so they dumped all the names.
So, so, so you've sent that to the council, have you, Shelley? Okay, to put it on the agenda, okay, so what?
So I'm in direct conflict, Chief, I'll step up.
Okay. So what, what, how should I record this item on the agenda? And what is it, again, do you know what it is? Oh, the, okay. And who's the land being allotted to?
Chase.
Chase Ogari Brandt.
So is it?
Okay. So Ogari has declared a conflict of interest and stepped out of the room. We'll note that in the minutes. And the land has been paid for, has it? So there's no reason to hold it up, then. Is there a mover and second to allot the land to Ogari Grant? It's been moved and paid for.
I'll, I'll, motion.
Moved by Chris, who will second it?
I'll second.
Aaron? Chris Brandt and Aaron, Curtis, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Chris, are you in favor?
I just. Go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, Chief, it's in, it's in breach of motion thirty-one from January twenty-eighth, and furthermore, uh, chief and council will be in breach of our fiduciary responsibility if we don't get the optimal amount for that land.
Well, I guess we need to settle on whatever the price is, because right now we have, we have ten, ten thousand dollars on the books, which has been amended at twenty-five thousand.
We're still live.
It should be live, it's public property.
And what's the reprice here? Well, I think before we can deal with this, the council's gonna have to, there's some motions that were made in pri- in, 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 in the private minutes that should be public about the price of land that's in the industrial park. And so.
Before we do that, if we rescind the motion, do we, can we just rescind it and then continue? Because we had spoke about that, right?
I, I think what we should do is make a motion to resc- what, what's the sale price of lots in the industrial park? You said you wanted to have an increase from ten thousand. It went to twenty-five thousand, then right after it went to fifty thousand, so we need a motion in the public minutes, what you're gonna sell that land for.
We, we had this, just this past year, we sold lots for twenty-five.
Okay, so what's, what, I wanted, we need a motion of counsel, which is it?
It was suggested that we bump it up to fifty, but it wasn't motion that we do that.
Uh, Chief, yes, it was, read the minutes.
It, it was, there was a motion.
So I'll motion to rescind.
So for, for the public minutes today.
At twenty-five.
For the, for the minutes today, let's make a motion, what, what it is, so going forward. Aaron's made a motion, it'll be twenty-five.
To keep it at twenty.
To keep it at twenty-five, I'll step in the motion.
Twenty-five thousand. Curtis, are you in favor of the motion?
I'm in favor.
Are you in favor of the motion, Chris?
Absolutely not.
So you're a negative vote? Negative vote? So there's, there's three here, that we have a quorum of council, the majority of council said twenty-five, so the motion is carried. There, there's no tie vote to break, so I don't get a vote. So it's carried, and we have a quorum of council. Now, but those other motions that you made in, in, um, they'll have to be rescinded.
We're going to bring them on the next agenda. So we can discuss them.
Those minutes have not been accepted yet, approved by council, so.
Yeah.
So those minutes are still under review by council, they're, they're not yet approved. Okay. Okay, so then, uh, that motion, then that resolution will be carried. And when the, you got the council document print, I'll note it on. The land allotted to Ogari Brandt? The add-on.
Because you just did a motion to set the price, right?
Yeah, so that'll be the price, this, this is, it'll be twenty-five thousand.
So now you have to approve that. You're, you're.
We already did.
All right, Chris.
All right, Chris.
Oh, up there.
We now need a motion to go in private.
All motion.
I'll second.
I did too. Thank you. Been moved and seconded, anybody opposed? Motion is carried.